Good afternoon, and I will call to order the March 14th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. Joined today by Commissioners Cronzer, Magrino, Lukey Pierce, Wheezy, Vreeland, and Rockwell. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the February 22nd meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next item of business is to go through the agenda. You can find hard copies of the agenda in the hallway. We will determine which items will be on consent, which we'll discuss, and which will be continued. So I'll start at the top of the agenda. Item number one is the Minnesota Stadium Edition at 401-424 Chicago Avenue, 701-713, and 719 Third Street South, and 717-16728, and 701 Fourth Street South. That is a preliminary and final plat. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Item two is a street renaming. Chicago Avenue and Kirby Pocket Place between South Third Street and South Sixth Street. We will discuss that item. Item three is Rider Truck Rental Incorporated at 333 through 359 Hoover Street Northeast, 332 through 346 Delano Street Northeast, and 2524 Winter Street Northeast. That's a conditional use permit and a site plan review for a transportation business. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? That's item three, Rider Truck Rental. Okay, is anyone else here to speak on that item? If there's no one, we'll put that on consent. Item four is the Canon Norms Cooler Extension at 4801 Chicago Avenue. We will continue that item to the March 28th meeting. Item five is 823 LLC at 823 15th Avenue Southeast. That's a variance and site plan review for a ten-unit apartment building. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item six is Walgreens at 2640 through 2650 Hennepin Avenue South. It's a site plan review and minor subdivision for a new commercial building there. We will discuss item six. Item seven is the Augsburg College-Hague for a Center for Science Business and Religion at 628 21st Avenue South, 2015 South Seventh Street, 623 20th Avenue South, 2011 South Sixth Street, and 606 21st Avenue South. Several applications for a new institutional building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item eight is the Kraus-Anderson Block redevelopment at 501-507-515 and 523 South Eighth Street, 502 and 518 South Ninth Street, and 811 Fifth Avenue South. Conditional use permit, site plan review, and registered land survey for a new mixed-use development there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. And item nine is the 116 East Hennepin redevelopment at 112 East Hennepin Avenue. Several applications for a new mixed-use building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. So our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, three, five, seven, eight, and nine will be on consent. We will discuss items two and six, and item four will be continued to the March 28th meeting. They have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to consider item four, which is to be continued to the March 28th meeting. They have a motion to continue item four. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? And that motion carries. We have no committee of the whole consent agenda today. So at this time, we'll move into the public hearing portion of the meeting, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. Again, that's items one, three, five, seven, eight, and nine. Is anyone wishing to speak on items one, three, five, seven, eight, or nine? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. They have a motion. Oh, we do have someone who wishes to speak.
On what?
Okay, and that's item two. We will discuss that item. And were you wishing to speak on one of those items?
On number two.
Okay, we will discuss that item, so we'll get to that in a moment. If there's no one who wishes to speak on the items on the consent agenda, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our two items for discussion. We'll begin with item two, the street renaming. And Commissioner Magrino, I know you had requested that we discuss this item. Is there a particular issue you'd like staff to discuss, or question you had?
I'm just going over the findings in the staff report and whether or not those... Oh, sorry. Just going over the findings in the staff report, and a couple of those, to me, struck out as maybe, I guess I just disagreed with them, so I wanted to hear staff's rationale.
Sounds good. Ms. DeBorck.
This is a street naming request that was submitted by the Minnesota Vikings for a portion of Chicago Avenue and Kirby Pocket Place between Third Street South and Sixth Street South. It's the area shown on the map. Currently, this portion of Chicago Avenue has two names, Kirby Pocket Place and Chicago. And what they're proposing is to rename this stretch for the three blocks from Third to Sixth to Vikings Way. So there are, they're not findings that we need to make, but there's criteria that we are asked to address when renaming a street. I won't go through all of them, as some of them are, whether they're numerical or alphabetic. But the ones that may want to be discussed, start with finding, or criteria number four. Continued streets should have the same name throughout the metropolitan area. As I had noted, this portion, or a portion of what is proposed to be changed already has two names, and so CPED and Public Works find that changing the segment of the street to Vikings Way is reasonable because a portion of the street segment already deviates from the practice. Another criterion is that a street name should be changed only if there will be a public benefit that clearly outweighs the public confusion and costs that would be created by the name change. Changing the name of the segment of the street to Vikings Way will be adjacent to the future US Bank Stadium that is currently under construction. And this is where the Minnesota Vikings will play football under a 30-year lease agreement with the MSFA. Criterion eight is street names should be alphabetical or numerical sequence whenever practical, and the numerical sequence of the streets downtown has already been broken by the introduction of Portland Park and Chicago Avenue. Criterion nine is that a street name should not uniquely identify a particular product, service, tenant, business, or living person. The proposed name on the street would identify the state of Minnesota's National Football League's team. CPED and Public Works staff finds that the Minnesota Vikings are a longstanding cultural and historical entity to the state of Minnesota. And then criterion 10 is that streets should generally be named after people, places, events, and things related to the city and citizens of Minneapolis. And we find that the Minnesota Vikings have been the state of Minnesota's National Football League's team since 1961, and as mentioned before, have signed a 30-year lease with the MSFA to play in the future US Bank Stadium. So based on those criteria for street naming, we do recommend that you approve the petition to change the name of the streets and forward that recommendation onto the City Council.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Vreeland?
Yes, so I have questions about the same, number four, number five, and number nine. With number four, it is the Kirby Pocket Place is, again, there's streets that have been renamed, but it doesn't really change the name of the street. It's kind of a ceremonial thing. Is that the case for Kirby Pocket Place?
It was, that is not the case. It actually has two official street names. And I'll just, just for the history of Chicago Avenue, in the original town of Minneapolis, Platt, dating back to 1855, Chicago Avenue was actually called Ames Street. And then in 1873, Ames Street became Eighth Avenue South. In 1949, Eighth Avenue South became Chicago Avenue, and then in 1996, Kirby Pocket Place was added between Fourth and Fifth Street. And it is an official name. It was not commemorative.
And number five, the public benefit, again, that's, you know, a matter of opinion.
Correct.
And number nine, I don't see how we can't say that it is a product and it is a tenant. So I don't know, I mean, the logic of that it being a product that people like, or a well-known product, doesn't seem to be indicated in the actual language of nine. So I'm curious about the logic of saying that somehow cultural and history in this category trump the fact that it's an actual product and an actual tenant.
And Commissioner Vreeland, did you have a specific question for staff?
Is it a product and are they tenants?
I guess I would let the applicant speak to whether they're a tenant or not. I mean, they do have a lease with the US Bank Stadium, but other, I guess I would ask the applicant to answer that question.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Wheezy, and then Commissioner Lukey.
Yes, hi. Do you, if you know? Oh, thank you. If you know, I presume that the Vikings organization chose the name Vikings Way?
Correct.
Do you know if there were other candidates, or is that the only name that they talked about with you?
That was the only name that they, that was the name that they submitted on the application form when they made the application to the city.
And do you know if there was a process by which other names were rejected, or?
I would ask the, save that question for the applicant.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Lukey.
Yeah, hi. Hillary, on number five, it says that it outweighs the costing confusion. What is the cost of changing the name? Do we know, I'm just, if I'm being asked to weigh it?
Jeff Handeland from the City of Minneapolis Public Works Department is here. There is a cost to change, to manufacture the street names, and then for Public Works to have to change those out, and he could answer that question. There is one, so yes, I would let him answer that question.
Thanks, Hillary.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lukey here. I'm Jeff Handeland. I'm a principal professional engineer in the Department of Public Works. Street, the cost to rename the street basically consists of, you know, if we just look at removing the existing street name signs and putting up new street name signs, it's on the order of hundreds of dollars, and the applicant is responsible for paying that, paying those costs, the city's actual costs, and in this case, the applicant has, you know, is aware of that and agreed to that.
So the cost for installation, fabrication, and installation and removal, as I assume by city employees, is only hundreds of dollars? I would have thought it'd be more, given what labor rates are these days. I mean, not significantly more, but I would imagine there's another zero after that somewhere, given what highway signs cost.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lukey here. I will, I will admit that the exact number's a little rusty in my mind, and I didn't bring that number, but it is on the...
But the Vikings would pay the actual cost of fabrication and labor behind all that?
That's correct.
Commissioner Cronzer, and then Commissioner Bender.
I have a question about the extension of the request from Fourth Street to Third Street. From Sixth to Fourth, it's kind of fronting the stadium. So two parts to this question, why the extension from Fourth to Third, and also are there any addresses or properties addressed on what's currently Chicago between Fourth and Third Streets?
So the applicant will... Can speak to the extension between Third and Fourth, but they do own the properties on each side of the block. Mr. Wolf owns these two parcels of land, and the MSFA owns the ramp that is currently under construction, or actually, it's open now. As far as any properties that have addresses, yes, the Hennepin County Morgue does have an address on Chicago, and they are aware that their address would need to change as a result of the street name change.
Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a change to the underlying street name, not a commemorative renaming?
Correct.
Could you talk about the difference between those two actions? Are there different criteria that underlying street renaming has to meet that a commemorative one doesn't, for example?
I do not have, I am not aware of the criteria for commemorative street naming, if it is the same or not, but I will defer to Jeff Handeland if he has that answer.
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Bender, there is a council-adopted policy that sets the criteria that was reviewed for the street name change application, and that applies, that was written for the purpose of official street name changes. Commemorative name changes, you know, that is not what that was written for, and I believe have become more of a thing after that City Council policy was adopted. So that could be up to future decision whether that criteria is applied with commemorative names.
And then, my understanding of our policy here is that we don't want private businesses to change the names of streets in front of their business. So if this was a proposal for Target Way instead of Nicollet Avenue, or Wells Fargo Way instead of Chicago Avenue, would we expect to be approving, recommending approval of this name change?
Mr. Chair, Councilmember Bender, that's, that's a good question. I'm not sure the answer to that question in this case. You know, we do have a street named Twins Way, and so, you know, as a question of sports teams, it seems that I would probably expect that it'd be more likely to recommend approval because there's precedent. In the case of other businesses, that's a good question.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, Hillary, this would, the Chicago Avenue name would be eliminated altogether, and I assume that would mean it would not be signed at the intersection of Fourth Street and Chicago?
Correct. The street, the street signs would be different in this section. They would say Vikings Way between Third and Sixth.
Okay. Are there any further questions of staff? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing at this time. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and maybe if you don't mind addressing the issues you've heard.
Good afternoon. Lester Bagley, Executive Vice President of the Minnesota Vikings. Thank you for the consideration for this application to change the street name to Vikings Way. And the reason for the request, and why we would like to change the street name, is to acknowledge the long-term iconic business, Minnesota Vikings. We were 32 years at the Metrodome, and we, as noted, we've made a long-term commitment to extend into, far into the future at this, at this site. Vikings Way would also honor the tradition of the Minnesota Vikings, and would, and also the local history, you know, Minnesota's team since 1961 at the, at this location, with a two-year exception at TCF Bank Stadium since 1982. As was noted by staff, there's also, you know, precedent established for the Twins. The business address of Target Field has been changed to Twins Way, and so it's a very similar or identical request to grant this request. And currently, it is Kirby Pocket Place that has been addressed. There's now a Kirby Pocket Place down near Target Field. So I can address a couple other issues that I've heard come up. The cost, confirm that the Vikings will, will cover or reimburse the cost of this name change, and why extend it to that additional block, and that to Third Street. And the request there is, as Ms. DeBorck showed, that there is a property owned by the Vikings on that street, and our intention is to eventually, is to develop that property and to make it into a Viking ancillary property that we would like to have, you know, the Vikings Way extended that additional block. So those are my couple comments. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, Commissioner Wheezy.
I'll ask you the same question I asked, obviously, the Vikings decided Vikings Way. Is that because of Twins Way, or?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was an additional question I meant to answer, Commissioner. It was, there was not an external process, but it was an internal discussion about what's the best way to honor the, again, the Minnesota history and tradition of Minnesota Vikings. And so consensus within the organization was to, was to name it Vikings Way. I think, again, the precedent of Twins Way is also factored into that discussion.
All right. Any further questions? Commissioner Lukey.
I actually have a question for staff about Twins Way. Is that an official street name, or is it an honorary one? And did it rename the street entirely, or was it like a duplicate name, like Kirby Pocket Place is duplicate the Chicago Avenue?
Thank you, Commissioners.
It was an official street name change.
So it's not synonymous with another street name, or anything like that?
No.
Why don't I recall that coming before us? Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers. Just, can I see a show of hands, how many of you wish to speak on this item? Just a couple. All right, you can decide who goes first, and come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Captain Jack Sparrow. I'm a candidate for Minnesota Senate District 62, and...
If you don't mind stating your address.
Yeah, 3522 Bloomington Avenue South, South Minneapolis. I think that we should not change the name of Chicago Avenue or Kirby Pocket Way to Vikings Way because the Vikings have had a history going back thousands of years of murder, rape, pillaging, taking slaves. Yeah, the Vikings were in North America 500 years before Columbus. The City Council voted to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. Why would we want to name anything after the Vikings, who have, whose history goes back much further? We talked about the cost of changing the, the street signs and so on. What about the cost of maps? What about the cost of changing all the maps around the world to reflect the name? What about the confusion it would cause by people coming to end of Chicago Avenue and finding Vikings Way? And maybe they don't know the reason for it, and could lead to people getting lost. Today, I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm also speaking for the ninth, Ward Nine Precinct Two, which unanimously passed a resolution suggesting that we not change any part of Chicago Avenue to Vikings Way. I met just a few hours ago with Councilmember Conno, who also signed on to this letter that I passed out called Vikings Way, No Way. Any questions?
All right. Are there any questions of the speaker? If there are none, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And we have one more speaker, and please state your name and address for the record.
Commissioners, my name is Arlene Freed. 1109 Xerxes Avenue South. I'm a longtime Minneapolis resident, and I'm not opposed to the name change, but I think there should be contingency. The naming of Chicago Avenue to Vikings Way has significant value for the Vikings. It would be remiss for Minneapolis to acquiesce to the Vikings' request without getting something of value for Minneapolis in return. One example of something that would be of value for Minneapolis would be to ensure that the commons is always publicly accessible, even on Vikings' days. Another example of something that would be of value for Minneapolis would be to ensure a Vikings-supported funding plan for the ongoing maintenance of the commons. In closing, please do not ignore this great opportunity to benefit the city of Minneapolis and its taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? If there's no one, I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we just have one item to consider on the street name change. Are there any further questions? Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Magrino.
I will make a motion to deny the application for the street name change, and if I get a second, I'll elaborate a little bit on it.
Is there a second?
Second, and I'll elaborate after Magrino.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Magrino.
Yeah, so I'll be pretty short here. I just, I feel that this is pretty clear that it doesn't meet the criteria that are listed here. I mean, it isn't going to be a contiguous street right there. I mean, I get annoyed when LaSalle turns into Blaisdell, and this is an area with a lot more hotels in it. I mean, I see that there is a possibility for confusion there. And I also don't see exactly how it is similar to Twins Way. I mean, we've said that that's something that might be precedent here, but that's really just sort of a stub of a street that goes into a parking lot over by the, by the Twins Stadium, so I don't know that that is something that I would consider. And it also does pretty clearly identify a particular product or business. I mean, the Vikings are a for-profit organization, and I don't see why the city needs to give up a piece of the commons here, not the commons, the park, but sort of the commons. It's a resource the city has, it's a street, and we're going to rename it because some doesn't like that the Bears play there. I don't see that that's a compelling argument.
Commissioner Magrino, or excuse me, Commissioner Rockwell.
The other one.
[laughing]
I just wanted to address a couple of the criteria. You know, I agree with Commissioner Magrino that there are, I think, a few points where this just simply doesn't fit the criteria. Criteria number five, that a street should be, name should be changed if there be a public benefit that clearly outweighs the public confusion. I think as indicated earlier, you know, that countless streets in the city could be named after firms, banks, other businesses. We're creating a slippery policy slope with this. We allow business names to be displayed in public. We allow them to be displayed on the buildings, and the Vikings decided to sell the naming rights, which is their prerogative, but that was giving up a right of public display of their name. Does not need to be compensated with city of Minneapolis advertising space. In terms of public benefit, you know, streets are the essence of public realm and city identity. Mission Street in San Francisco, the Bowery in New York, Champs-Elysees in Paris, you name it, you know, streets create a city. They reflect neighborhoods in the city at large, rather than potentially transient businesses. I'd also like to talk about criteria number nine, street should not uniquely identify particular product, service, tenant, business, or living person. As has been stated a couple times, this would identify a particular service or business, or tenant or business, sorry. Vikings in their little rationale document that they submitted, it admitted as much, they qualified the business part by referring to themselves as iconic business. So we'll give them that. The others of the rationale also state of the precedent, been established in renaming the street after businesses Twins Way. We're not legally bound, the commission's not legally bound by its prior decisions, and this body's decisions, right or wrong, and I think that was wrong, do not carry presidential value. Finally, number 10, proposed name should meet one of the following applicable criteria: commemorate local history, places, events, or culture, or to strengthen neighborhood identity. Again, the Vikings are tenant and business. While they've played in Minnesota since the 1960s, they originally played in Bloomington, not Minneapolis. They moved to Minneapolis then, and recent years were bought by New Jersey residents who then hoped to move the team to Arden Hills, and indicated they might move it out of the state altogether. The team and the Sports Authority have used the stadium to get 500 million in taxpayer contributions, and the Sports Authority team have detracted, I would argue, from the neighborhood with deals, non-neighborly deals related to... with deals, non-neighborly deals related to the use of the Commons Park and the pedestrian bridge. And finally, I think this was tongue-in-cheek, but I'm going to address it anyway. I wish to briefly address the concern about the current street name, Chicago Avenue, and its association with a rival team. First, it's worth noting that the Bears did not change Michigan Avenue, which runs near Soldier's Field to Bears Way, although the Lions are also an NFC North competitor. Nor did the Bears complain in 2015 when the Field Museum, which lies immediately adjacent to Soldier's Field, hosted the Traveling Vikings exhibit for nearly all of 2015. Are the Vikings more afraid of their competitors than the Bears? I hope for the future scoreboard that the Vikings are not cowed by a rival's name. For if they are, we should expect a dismal record for the Vikings in away games, where the Vikings will always be surrounded by opponents' logos, mascots, and team names. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lukey-Pier and then Commissioner Kronzer.
A hard act to follow. Okay. I just wanted to briefly, although I agree with my colleagues, I just wanted to touch on just a couple things tied to a few of the criteria as well. I think particularly criteria number four, I think that that actually speaks to a larger issue that our planning commission has addressed numerous times in the many years I've been on it, which is healing the grid. And I think keeping a contiguous street name throughout. It may have been Kirby Pocket Place, but it was slash Chicago Avenue. I think that Twins Way is different. It's, has a finite run. It has a beginning and an end, and it's Twins Way the whole way. Having it switch from Chicago to Vikings Way to Chicago is definitely not continuous and definitely breaks it up and is not part of healing the grid, which you've been trying to do for over two decades now in the city. I will hold off on my critique of criteria number five about the benefits outweighing the cost. I think the costs are actually a lot larger. And I don't just mean the cost of actually installing signage and whatnot. But I think, on a good point was brought up about what are the costs of naming rights? And why are we willing to forgo ours at a cost of, to what benefit? I don't see any benefit to the public action. And we actually aren't here to benefit businesses. We're here to benefit the greater public good. And I don't see how this would benefit them. It's not like you can't see the stadium from anywhere in the city. So it's not like no one's going to be able to find it. And lastly, I think that number nine's a really big sticking point for me. They are a tenant, they are a business. And quite frankly, Target's been in business longer than they have. And so if we are willing to give naming rights to the Vikings, Target was founded in 1960. So are we going to be renaming Nicklet Mall? And another question is, what happens for Fourth Street and Sixth Street and 11th Avenue since the stadium kind of takes up all that whole area? Are we renaming three other streets in the future too? Maybe Vikings Place, Vikings Drive, Vikings Street? I don't know. It seems like a really slippery slope once you've kind of opened that Pandora's Box. And while I can see that an attempt isn't made at distinguishing Twins Way as a precedent, to me, it seems like a very different animal indeed because it's been outlined and defined differently than this one would be. This one seems rather an outlier in the situation. And I wonder where this will lead 10 years down the road if we open these floodgates now. So with that, I will, I will be supporting the recommendation to deny the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Kronzer.
Thank you, President Brown. I just want to talk about the wayfinding aspect of this for a minute. I could understand if the request was from Sixth to Fourth. Once we start going to Third, why not go to Washington? And I mean, people are going to be crossing town on Chicago or even crossing the Third and Fourth, which are one-way pairs. The wayfinding aspect of this becomes pretty problematic in my mind. And just a piece on Target Way. Sorry, not Target Way. You guys forget me. Twins Way. Twins Way was actually former Third Avenue North, which was an orphan section of the road when the stadium was built. So it actually needed a new name. Thank you.
All right. Are there, is there any further discussion? I'll just add, from a planning standpoint, I would have some concerns as well just because Chicago Avenue is considered a commercial corridor in the comprehensive plan, a street where we want to channel new development. And certainly, that's a part of the city that is very rapidly transforming. And I think to the north of Fourth Street and to the south of Fifth Street, we have some pretty prime development opportunities. So I do also have some concerns about the continuity. I would agree with Commissioner Kronzer that if, you know, we're looking at a smaller section of the street, I would have fewer concerns or maybe a dual street name. But losing the Chicago Avenue name altogether is a bit of a concern. So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion on the table to deny the street name change. In that case, Clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Swisee?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey-Pier?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
And that motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our discussion on that item. Our next item for discussion is item six of Walgreens, 2640 Hennepin Avenue. And staff is Ms. Vreeland.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The application before you is a minor subdivision and site plan review for a new Walgreens at the corner of 27th Street West and Hennepin Avenue South. The addresses are 2640 to 2650 Hennepin Avenue, outlined here in bold. The applications include a minor subdivision to adjust the common lot line between the two properties shown here. So the lot line would move slightly to the north, right up to the First Tech Building. And that building would stay as is. And then the new parcel at the corner would become the home of a Walgreens. Here's a general site layout. So again, the only application here for the building is an application for site plan review. The applicant is proposing the building at the corner with a drive-through on the west side here. You can't see where I'm pointing. Drive-through on the west side. So there would be a curb cut onto Hennepin. Find a better site plan. And a curb cut onto 27th to allow traffic to circulate through the site. The entrance is here at the corner of the parking lot and Hennepin. As far as alternative compliance on the site plan here, the only thing that the applicant is requesting alternative compliance for is a small portion of the landscaped yard along Hennepin. That's really just right here where the bike racks are shown in the landscaped yard. And staff is actually recommending that those be relocated and the landscaping be extended. And then there's another piece of alternative compliance that's actually recommended by staff. The applicant was proposing to extend an existing seven-and-a-half-foot fence along the west property line here. Right where I'm showing in this location is where the fence would be extended. There's an existing brick garage right on the property line, on the adjacent property. And so putting a solid wood fence up against a brick garage didn't really add any benefit as far as screening goes and would have created maintenance issues for both the fence and the garage. So we're recommending that they just do the plantings that are shown here and that we grant alternative compliance for the 90% opacity and, or excuse me, 95% opacity and six feet in height on the screening. As far as the general building layout goes here, you can see the entrance vestibule. This needs to be flipped. So this would be Hennepin here, 27th here. So you would walk in here. They're not proposing to block any of the windows. So there would be open corridors along the streets and along the parking lot. The drive-through is located back here. This is actually a mezzanine level that stacks in the corner. Here are the elevations. So as far as building design alternative compliance, they're asking for alternative compliance on windows on the west elevation, which is the one second from the bottom there that looks mostly blank. That's where the drive-through is located. So the pharmacy is in that area. And then they have their back-of-house loading and receiving in that location. Due to concerns with security for the pharmacy, we're recommending that they do clear-story windows back there, both to break up the blank wall and as an alternative for the glazing requirement. Otherwise, window requirements are exceeded on the remaining elevations. The only other thing, oh. Technically, because this first floor or single-story building exceeds 20 feet in height, they technically have a second story per the zoning code definition of height. It's not a truly functioning second story, so there are no windows up there. So as a practicality, we need to go through the alternative compliance procedure on that. But staff is recommending that the alternative compliance be granted. So here again, just a quick shot at the building. So the applications before you are the site plan review and the minor subdivision. You know, understanding as we went through the findings for whether or not this is consistent with the comp plan, Hennepin Avenue is a commercial corridor in this location. We do have policies recommending a minimum height of two stories on commercial corridors. But as of right now, we've been through this before. There is no policy or no ordinance requiring that they build a two-story building.